Committee to order. Myself and Councilmember Lee are present, and so we have a quorum. And I'll ask that we begin with the public comment.
Caller with the last four numbers, 1403. Please state your number and the item you want to speak on.
Please state your name as well, please.
Let's try that again. They don't seem to be hearing you.
Caller with the last four numbers, 1108. Please press *9 to unmute yourself.
Hi, it's actually *6 to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah. Hi, it's Daniel Guth. It's just so the person who was just speaking knows it's *6 to unmute.
Okay. So you'll have two minutes on the items and one minute on general public comment.
Okay, so we do have general today. I appreciate that. Okay. Item number seven, councilmembers. Thank you for this. Thank you, councilmembers Blumenfield and Corretts. Mr. Corretts knows I'm very fond of his efforts to help animals. This is a good thing, and if you can't see by the agenda item number, but the actual motion says to make it more expansive than the city's original ordinance, and I applaud that. This does more for animals sooner. My only admonition would be that the city should have been doing more effective work for animals and sooner than the state. I appreciate what you've done on this. I appreciate what you're doing to bring the city ordinance to make it more impactful, but I would only ask that in the future, we do things more and fuller to help animals in the future. And Mr. Corretts knows where I stand on this, and I appreciate that. Moving on to item number eight. Item number eight, the pet retention program is a great idea. In the past, I've had concerns about the Animal Welfare Trust Fund being spent not always on things that bring direct healing, direct nutrition, direct help to animals that make them feel better physically, that bring better care for them. These funds have previously been used for travel expenses, lodging, meals, and tickets, and that shouldn't be done. So while I certainly applaud spending money in the pet retention program, I would ask that it be very clear to animal services that this money is only to be used for things that bring direct comfort, not salaries, not travel, not lodging, not tickets, not uniforms. It has to bring stuff that brings direct comfort to animals. That's the intention of the Animal Welfare Trust Fund. That's the intention of the Pet Retention Program. So I support this, but we should be very clear. Every single dollar in this item or in the Animal Welfare Trust Fund should bring comfort, healing, cleanliness, and things that keep them in families, in homes, and healthy. So good on both items, number seven and number eight. Councilmembers, I'm going to move on to general public comment. I'm glad that you're back convening because it's been way too many weeks and way too many issues, humane and otherwise. So I'm going to pivot to a non-animal issue. I have a column in City Watch LA this week that talks about an act of malfeasance by Mike Fuhr's office that I hope you will investigate. This was not misfeasance, it was malfeasance in the Price Waterhouse Coopers DWP matter, where the FBI raided both agencies. And this week or last week, a judge ordered the city to pay $2.5 million to Price Waterhouse Coopers for malfeasance by someone or several people in Mike Fuhr's office. $2.5 million for malfeasance. That is somebody who directly and intentionally tried to gum up the works in a legal case. That money could have been used for, God, how many spayneuters we could have done? How many food pantries could we have stuffed? I would encourage you to investigate who did what that caused us to cough up $2.5 million. It wasn't an accident. It wasn't misfeasance. It was intentional. It was malfeasance. Please do the right thing and find out who did it and why, and hold them accountable. Have a good meeting. Thank you.
All right, next caller.
Caller with the last four numbers, 1403. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name.
All items, it is the P P P. All fucking items in general public comments, please.
Please identify yourself.
I said, Tommy, it's the P P P. All items, please, in general public comments, period. Can you hear?
Yes, go on.
Yes. So how much time do I get, you son of a bitch? How much time?
You get two minutes for your items, one minute public comment.
And you already wasted 30 seconds of your time.
Yes. Yes, because you're a dumb fucking Jew. I know, yes. So now we get to item nine. What? Declaration of a Pet Retention Program? We already have plenty of pets already in the city council. We have a goat, a corian. We have a pet of P corian, correct? We have enough animals in the city council. We don't need to retain any more of you. So no, my fucking items, no. Now we get to the number seven. The ban on fur. Fur, yes, I actually support that because I'm an animal, and I don't want my fellow animals being scalped for fur. If you want fur, grow your own hair. For example, Joe Puskaino recently has grown fur. Now, we're not going to force him to donate his fur to somebody's fur coat, right? So very good. Number six. The elimination of discrimination and hate. Making the bitch get the same money as the nigger. I fully support it. It is good. Why are niggers getting more money than bitches? Bitches do more than niggers. In fact, the bitch should get paid a little more than the nigger, but I will accept number six as it is. Now, number five.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
What's that, son of a bitch? Am I on my general yet, or is it hotel?
Yeah, you're on your general public comment.
Okay, very good. Good, I get my fucking minute. Okay. So the fucking minute is, why is the city attorney paying a $2.5 billion fucking fine for cheating Price Waterhouse Coopers? It should be $2 billion, P P P. You must give Price Waterhouse Coopers the $2 billion that they deserve for putting up with your fucking shit. Mike Fuhr is worse than an animal. He's a cocksucker, and we all know it. If he just would not have filed those false criminal charges in 2017, the FBI would not be in City Hall. Oh, well, tsk, tsk, tsk. Continue killing animals. Continue fucking up, and continue your quest for the Controller's Office. Yes, you would become the first bad fucking P to ever be a Controller. How exciting for the vote.
Caller, your time is up. Thank you. Caller with the last four numbers, 9423. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name.
Hello, hi, can you guys hear me?
Please state your name and the item you want to speak on.
Okay, my name is Catherine. I just want to make a general public comment. I find it ridiculous that you guys are called the Personal and Animal Welfare Committee, and yet you guys have done nothing to help the animals at the shelters. You continue to allow the general manager, Brenda Barnett, to have the two shelters, North Central and West Valley, closed, and her giving away the West Valley shelter to a nonprofit is ridiculous. The city needs those shelters. They were paid by the tax dollars money, so it needs to remain a city shelter, and it needs to service the city that they are in. It's ridiculous that you guys haven't even touched on that subject or put it on your agenda. You guys allow Brenda Barnett to continue to kill healthy, adoptable animals under the pretense of being behavioral or being extremely sick. I don't know how killing a dog who is having an ear infection is considered some...
Caller, your time is up.
...a dog that's not healthy.
Thank you. Caller with the last four numbers, 9767. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the item you want to speak on.
Hello, this is Amanda Dafos for Mayor Garcia's office, and I'm here in case there are any questions about the Gender Equity, the Controller report. I don't have a specific comment, but I just wanted to note that if there are any questions, I'm here on this line and can unmute at a later date to answer any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last four numbers, 1403. Please hit *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller. Hello?
Hello?
Okay, we're going to go to the next caller. Caller with the last four numbers, 9767. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the item you wish to speak on. Caller with the last four numbers, 9767. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the items you want to speak on. Okay, caller with the last four numbers, 9423. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the item you want to speak on. Caller with the last four numbers, 9767. Please hit *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name and the item you want to speak on.
Hello, this is 9767, and this is Amanda from the mayor's office. I think you've called on me a second time, but I'm here for the gender equity item. So if that does come up and there are questions, if you'd like me to answer, you can just let 9767 know. Thank you.
And then caller with the last four numbers, 1403. Please hit *6 to unmute yourself. And please state your name.
I think this is a previous speaker. Mr. Hirsch, I think this is a previous speaker.
Yes, I've already had him leave the room, so we're done.
Okay, so that closes the public comment. And with that, I'd like to ask that we consider items 2, 3, 7, and 8 for consent items, if there's no objection.
Councilmember Lee, are you in... I'm sorry. Councilmember Lee, are you in agreement?
No, no objection.
Okay, so I assume those will be passed on consent, again, items 2, 3, 7, and 8.
Very good.
And if we could start with item number one.
Item one, communication for the mayor relative to the exemption of one principal project coordinator, class code 9134, for the Board of Public Works or the Civil Service pursuant to Charter Section 1001B.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Fernando Campos, executive officer with the Board of Public Works. Councilman Corretts and Councilman Lee, it's a pleasure to be before your committee today presenting on this item. The item before you is a request for an exemption for a principal project coordinator to act as the director of our Climate Emergency Mobilization Office. As you may recall, back in July of 2019, the city council established the Office of the Climate Emergencies Mobilization. Since then, we started to mobilize and also started our recruitment process, which started back in December of 2019. The position that is before you for exemption, we did receive 27 applications. We've gone through a rigorous recruitment process, if you will, about six different phases over the last year since December of 2019 to the present. COVID did hit in March of 2020, which started, which had a delay in our recruitment process. But just to give you an idea as to what that recruitment process looked like, we did start back in January of 2020, and we looked at the minimum qualifications for this position. Again, this position will be responsible for handling all the climate emergencies-related items, facilitating the objectives, and supporting the goals of the Climate Emergency Commission, and also serving as the liaison between the mayor, city council, the Climate Emergency Commission, community assemblies, and also myself, the executive officer with the Board of Public Works. Of the 27 applications, we did narrow it down to 17 best qualified candidates. We did go through a written supplemental questionnaire and also interviews. And we also comprised two unique panels in this election process, and one is the community panel, which was comprised of members of the community from Tree People, from Climate Justice Alliance, from Communities for Better Environment. And the goal behind this was just to get the idea as to what the community was looking for in the best candidate. Of those that moved on to this phase, this is phase number five, we also had the same five candidates interview with our council offices, council office number five and also number six. From there, we were able to identify the top two candidates, and the top two candidates are now being considered with the mayor himself and his office. And we look forward to this exemption so that we can continue our recruitment process and finalize and make that final selection. We ask for a favorable vote and the approval for the exemption for this position. And I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, and I'll just say that we're obviously excited because we've been at this process for a long time. We obviously know that despite our participation and efforts around the world to set climate goals, like they did with the Paris Accords, that we're hurtling past the levels of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere to maintain a healthy and stable environment. So we're looking to work faster to break our addiction to fossil fuels, reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, engage the whole city in a coordinated climate emergency mobilization effort, and focus on environmental justice as we do that. That was my intention with the legislation that Councilmember Blumenfield and I authored to create the world's first Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization. And I'm proud that council and the mayor have agreed with us, and thank the LEAP LA Coalition, who's been working hard with us for the past several years. And we know the right candidate has to have a deep knowledge of climate and toxic pollution, community organizing, city policies, environmental justice focus, as well as mobilizing every corner of our city, including those suffering the most from our levels of toxic pollution. And so with all these efforts, we hope that this position will get this all moving. And I would just ask you how we're doing on that process. Has there been a decision yet on who will fill the position? How close are we to that happening?
We are extremely close. I would anticipate that with the approval of this exemption and getting it adopted by our city council, the selection will be announced shortly thereafter.
And I wonder if you could just give us a few seconds to describe the process that was undertaken to find this person.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, the selection process was extremely rigorous. It took us about eight, nine months to get to this point. Again, we did reach out to various platforms to recruit for this position. We were successfully in getting 27 applications for this position. Very excited at that time when we received all the applicants. The first review process, we looked at the minimum qualifications. We also looked at the most desirable qualifications that we were looking for. For example, one of the things that we were looking for in this position was really looking at having five or more years of experience as an environmental scientist, having some knowledge in economics, policy, environmental justice, of course, and being able to work with stakeholders, working group, task force, and also working with local governments. This position will also oversee and work very closely with a series of community assemblies. These assemblies may be three to five of those throughout the entire city, so really grassroots orientation and grassroots understanding of the community at large and civic engagement. Once we identified the most desirable, or the candidates with the most desirable traits and experiences, we did ask for a supplemental questionnaire, and we also went through an extensive interview process. From there, as I indicated, we did recommend the top five candidates to our climate, I'm sorry, to our community panel interview and also our council district panel interviews. Again, those were the top five. And then from there, we were able to identify the top two candidates. Those two top candidates were interviewed by the mayor himself, and we anticipate a selection shortly.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, any questions or comments on this? So if we could call the roll then on this item?
Councilmember Corretts.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Matter passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Next, item four.
Item four, Bureau of Sanitation Report Relative to Exemption of Ten Plant Equipment Trainee Positions for the Bureau of Sanitation from the Civil Service pursuant to Charter Section 1001D1.
And do we have someone from the department to present or answer questions? I know I have a number of questions, so if there's no one here to answer them, we'll put this on, lay this on the table for the moment and revisit it at the end of the meeting. Item number five.
Item five, Motion, Bond and Corretts Relative to Exempting the Emergency Management Department for the Hiring Freeze to Fill Certain Vacant Positions.
And I have some concerns about this. I think this is absolutely necessary, that we adequately fund this department. However, I want to be sure that the number and choice of these positions is the right one, and I know the CAO is in the process of analyzing it. So I'd like to ask that we hold this item in committee and ask for a report at our next meeting from the CAO on his recommendations of which of these positions should be exempted and why. So if there's no objection, if we could just hold this item until our first meeting in November.
No objection.
So that will be held. Item number six.
Item six, Communication of the Mayor and Controller Report Relative to Women's Pay and Representation at the City of Los Angeles. This matter has also been referred to the Immigrant Affairs, Civil Rights, and Equity Committee.
So if we could have a report from the Controller's Office and from the mayor's office?
Good afternoon. My name is Siri Colsa. I am the Deputy Director of Auditing at the Controller's Office, and I am joined here at this meeting by my boss, Bob Wiganraff, who's also on the meeting. He is the Director of Auditing. And we're very pleased to be here today to present the report closing the gap, Women's Pay and Representation at the City of Los Angeles, that was issued by the Controller's Office on August 5. I'll just spend a few minutes to cover in very broad strokes the results of our analysis, and then we'd be happy to answer any of your questions. This project used the data from the city's payroll system to present a picture of the city's workforce relative to gender. The Controller felt that it was important to share this information with city leaders along with some context and very broad recommendations so that policymakers such as yourselves could take further action to narrow the gender gap. I'd like to stress that we did not assess, nor can we comment on, any of the prior efforts or current measures that were taken by the city relative to recruitment, selection, or promotion of women in the workforce. Rather, we just focused on the data, and the data shows that we can do a lot better. This data was sourced from the city's payroll system, as I said, PACER, which includes just basic employee profile information. When a new employee is hired, this self-identified data is noted on the city's job application and then is entered into our payroll system. So using that profile data for all active, full-time city employees, as of a certain point in time and over an annual, one-year period, we were able to pull relevant information to paint a picture of the city's workforce. That point in time measurement was early December of 2019, so the numbers of women and men that were employed with their various job classifications in various departments was accurate as of that date. The gross pay and overtime analysis used payroll information for fiscal year 2019/20. The observations from our analysis were striking. Women comprise just 28% of the city's full-time workforce. This stems primarily from the fact that our largest departments and the city's sworn personnel are disproportionately men. Also, while men and women who occupy the same job classification are paid at the same rate, if we look at the city as a whole, the average gross annual pay for women was just 76% of that amount earned by men. This disparity can be explained by the fact that men are more likely to be in higher-paid job classifications, and especially in those positions that traditionally earn a significant amount of overtime. To address these findings and work towards increasing gender equity across the city's workforce, the report offered three very broad recommendations for consideration. At their September 3 meeting, the Council Committee on Immigrant Affairs, Civil Rights, and Equity approved and amended the report's recommendations and directed specific action towards their implementation to the Personnel Department with assistance of the Human Relations Commission and the Commission on the Status of Women. We presented also, also we presented this report to that commission on September 18. Now, we'd be happy to answer any of the committee's questions related to this report.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, do you want to start? Any questions for the Controller's Office?
Siri, I'm reading here. So we rank last of the 10 major cities in the United States? That's just...
It's surprising.
Yeah, it's surprising. I mean, for what I like to think is a very progressive, open city, though, we rank last amongst the pay or the percentage of people who are employed?
The number of women who are employed within those cities.
Got it. Okay. And I'm sorry, I mean, do you have recommendations on how we can... I mean, I see that, you know, the fire department, police department obviously make up a huge amount of city workforce, and I thought the numbers were a little bit better than that. Do you know what the current goals are for the fire department and police department in hiring?
Councilmember Lee, this is Bob Wiganraff. We did not get into the specific goals in this particular report, and so I recommend recommendations are, are very broad, and I, I think they're about people working together and then continuous transparency through time, so, so that you would have the opportunity to see movement in any area that, that you're interested in.
You know, Councilman Carruthers, I think this is an issue that we should revisit, you know, often, to make sure that we're actually improving as a city, because these numbers are not, you know, are not acceptable.
Oh, and I said such great things, but you missed it.
I'm sure they were inspiring.
Well, I, I, I agreed with you off, off mic that these are terrible responses, so we clearly have a long ways to go. First, on a technical issue on the report, the last row of the table on Exhibit 5 on Page 5, read "Management Analyst," and I'm wondering if it's supposed to read, I mean, it reads "Management Assistant," whether it's supposed to read "Management Analyst" and "Senior Management Analyst" instead?
It is. You found our typo.
So if, if we could correct that, that would be... How much is, is the, the report skewed in terms of wage disparity by the fact that, as I recall, of the top 100 highest-paying jobs in the city, only two are held by women?
And, and Councilmember Carruthers, what do you mean by, by, by skewed? Are, what factors are contributing to that?
Well, we're, women are paid 76% of what men are paid in the city. And, excuse me if you can hear the loud noise outside.
We're fine.
There's a gardener next door that's making a lot of noise. But I'm wondering how much of that...
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Price has joined the meeting.
Oh, yes, I see that now. We welcome Mr. Price. How much of that has impacted when those are the highest-paying jobs in the city and almost all of them are held by men? If you took those 100 out of the picture, how different would that number be?
Councilmember Carruthers, we have not done that analysis, but I think it certainly would, would change the number to some degree, but I don't know how, how, I don't know that it would change it dramatically, the overall wage disparity.
And we compared that particular factor to other cities, I would have to think that having only two of 100 of the highest-paid positions in this city held by women is shockingly low and speaks to some of our promotion policies that we definitely would want to take a closer look at.
And Councilmember, we did not make that comparison, and I will say this, that we, we did have the benefit of, in California, there is great transparency with, with salary, but in some cases, you don't have all of the, all of the demographic information. So we just focused on, on our top 100.
Okay. Now, I know in a letter dated August 31 of 2020 to your office, the mayor's office indicated they've made several efforts since the 2015 Executive Directive, and that there are greater systemic issues that play a role in the difficulty of achieving equity and representation and pay for women in the city. Does that assertion change the findings or recommendations of your report at all?
Councilmember Carruthers, we do not believe that, that they do. We, our recommendations are focused on, on improving the results that we've placed before you, and we did not look at the, the efforts that have been made over the years. But I think, as my colleague Siri said, that based on the information we shared with you, we believe there's great room for improvement.
Okay, thank you. And the Controller report notes that the current payroll system doesn't have functionality for non-binary gender identities. So does the Controller have any data for those employees or any current way of tracking that?
Councilmember Carruthers, that is correct, that our 20-year-old payroll system, it, it only allows male or female to be entered into the system. And so I will tell you, under the leadership of a number of departments, but on this issue, very much so the leadership of the Personnel Department, we are working on a new payroll system that will include non-binary, and then as a subset to that, it will provide us over a dozen different ways to be able to characterize individuals in terms of gender and gender preference. But we don't have that information right now.
You're referring to the HRP system, right?
Yes, yes, Councilmember.
Do you know, just as an aside, what the estimated current timeline is for that being implemented? When do we think that actually gets put into place based on where we are now?
I believe our current goal is January of 2022, so a little over a year from now.
Well, that would be great if we could pull that off. It's a long time in coming with a very outdated system.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a couple of questions for the mayor's office or personnel. Do we have folks on the line that can answer those? I believe we had someone call in from the mayor's office.
If, if you wish to...
This is Amanda Duff from the mayor's office.
One moment. If you want to be speaking at a meeting, it's better to come in on the Google side than Zoom. That's really just meant for the public speakers. I can quickly connect you if you need.
Yeah, why don't you do that so we can hear a little better?
While we're waiting, Councilman, Siri, do you know what the, and we should lead by example, I mean, do you know what, maybe not calling out each council district, but do you know, do you have a subset of the city council side and how we as, you know...
Are you asking about elected officials?
Yes.
We did not do that analysis. That's certainly something that we could do.
This is Amanda Duff from the mayor's office. I don't know if you can carry me okay now, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I've got a few. One is, I know the mayor's office and personnel have been working hard to address this issue. Have you seen the data change since 2015, and are there particular measurable outcomes that we should be looking for?
Thanks so much for the question. I would, I would say that, you know, we were, you know, 2015 began what are generally called sort of annual plans, gender equity plans. So each department writes an annual plan, and in those plans, they set out a series of goals, and then they all have to talk about the accomplishments that they've made. There are some really great examples in places like the Department of Engineering, ICA, LAFD, LAPD, where they set goals around women and bringing more women in or moving more women to the ranks. And in each of the cases that I mentioned, plus others, there's been quite a bit in the way of results. We've found that the plans really help everybody baseline in their own departments, and then set appropriate goals, and it actually works to meet those goals. So there's, the few that I mentioned are certainly examples. It doesn't change, of course, some of the things that the Controller's report raised around pay, and by virtue of some of the roles that women fill in the city, you know, and public service, and how long people spend in public service. I think those are some of the deeper, beyond the data or deeper into the data type things that would really be worth looking at. The last thing I'd say is around one of the earlier questions about how LA ranks. And what we found over the years, some of the things that we found are just because of the size of the city. So for example, the size of LAFD, the size of LAPD, and then, of course, the fact that there's more, you know, generally more men. I think LAPD now is about 19% women. Some of those kinds of just pure numbers things might be worth looking at to put some of the LA data in context, that might be, might be worth looking at. And the last thing I've noticed, the report on the status of women and girls, which was released in 2015, did I think a really great baseline, and that's thanks to the, the Women's Commission and a partnership with many agencies in the city and the mayor's office. That report has been updated, it'll again be updated this year. And that could be a really great place just to look for information both about the city workforce and then the broader Los Angeles area for baselining women. And of course, we're really happy, I think, the gender equity work for the mayor. I'd be delighted to partner with the Controller's Office in the future around some of those kind of deeper questions that we've been able to look at over the years.
And, and your office and the Controller's Office have been working on this issue for a while, but could there be more collaboration with other entities such as the city council, labor unions, community groups, and the mayor's office and controller in trying to mitigate this problem? Seems like if we, if we had a more comprehensive strategy with a greater number of stakeholders, we might be more successful.
Yeah, we'd be delighted. I mean, we lead these annual gender equity plans, and so every year, we go through a planning process with the department, and those are, you know, we publish a lot of that information on the mayor's website, and that's publicly, you know, available. And I think we'd be really excited to partner, because we agree that some more partners certainly would be better, and, and it is a city, citywide matter, and so I think the leadership across the board on this issue will be particularly important.
Okay. Mr. Lee, do you have any questions or comments for the mayor's office?
No, not at this time.
So if not, I would...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Price, sorry.
Thank you.
I forgot to plug in on this item. Sorry about that.
No problem. Let me just thank you for your single-minded leadership on this issue. We always appreciate your, your commitment to it and to the, the input that council leaves at in this process as well. You know, I'm just curious, you know, I think this is certainly a good start. It's just a glaring deficiency, though, that women are underpaid. And my hunch is that women of color are falling even lower. And so just wondering, is there any plan to dig a little deeper, either from the mayor's office or the Controller's Office, to dig a little deeper and, again, just to help illuminate the total landscape on the, of the disparities that exist with our females versus male employees?
Councilmember Price, this is Bob Wiganrath from the Controller's Office. We are in the process of working on a similar payroll analysis that takes a look at ethnicity as well as gender. So when we're completed with that report, I think it will speak to, to your question and provide information to answer that.
Great. Well, again, I also share the, the comment with my colleagues about involving the council offices and other stakeholders in this process. We all have an interest in making sure, you know, that equity is, is in practice across the board. So I just appreciate the efforts that City Family is making now, and encourage us to do more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would suggest that we concur with the recommendations adopted by the Immigrant Affairs, Civil Rights and Equity Committee, and I would ask that we add one thing to it, that we ask for a quarterly progress report to come back to a joint meeting of our committee and the aforementioned Immigrant Affairs, Civil Rights and Equity Committee, so that we can be sure we are making rapid progress on this issue. And with that recommendation, I'd ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Carruthers.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Very good. That's, and we will concur.
The matter passes.
Very good.
And I think we should return to item four and see if we have gotten someone from the Department of, the Bureau of Sanitation to speak to this item and answer questions. And if not, I would ask that we hold this item until our next meeting. Hearing nobody from that department, that would be my, my suggestion that we continue this item until our November meeting.
Very good.
And so, anything else before us?
That clears the desk.
All right, well, in that case, we are adjourned.